Okay. Commissioner Sheffield, are you good with that amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
And I just, yeah, I have a question regarding the landscaping. And I know that the arborist is going to be involved, but I know that sometimes the fall is not the best place, best time to plant certain trees. So there may be a need for some flexibility there.
At the request of the arborist, we can make it flexible.
Yep, okay.
Any other questions? Call the question. The motion passes three zero with Commissioner Burrell and Cupid absent.
Okay, next item is other business item number thirty-four of two thousand and twenty-five, which is to consider amending the stipulations for Camilo Affolabi Fadario regarding rezoning application Z forty-seven of two thousand and sixteen. The property is located on the east side of Ellis Mountain Drive, south of Sage Lake Bend, in Land Lot forty-five of the nineteenth district. Is the applicant present? The director of show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number thirty-four?
Two. Two.
Okay, the director show there's two people here opposed. All those who would like to address the board either for or against the application, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, Bob. My name is Camilo Fadario. I have some pictures of the fence. So I'm here because the county code enforcement office came to my house and they told me to bring down my fence. The first person who came said the fence was okay, but then another officer came and said, okay, the fence has to go down. Then there's been subsequent visits after then, and they said, oh, the trees also in the buffer must go down. But before buying the property, the builder said they have a lot of communication with county, saying that the fence was okay and that we could have the fence in that, in that, in that location. So the buffer, we have a buffer monument that says, okay, you cannot encroach within this buffer, but, but the fence was okay, that's what they said. But now we're finding out, okay, there's a misunderstanding that you cannot have a fence there. So I'm here today to have the buffer reduced so that I can keep the fence up, but I do not intend to encroach in the buffer. And the fence is not visible from the other, the H O A behind that thirty-foot distance between the both subdivisions. So that's why I'm here today.
So do you have any other information you'd like to share?
Excuse me, ma'am?
Is there any other information you'd like to share?
Yeah, so I guess the main reason for buying the property was because of the access to the fence, because I have an autistic son who is five years old and kind of needs space to play. And so that's, that's my understanding that we could have a fence with, with that, with that purpose of land available for just, so it could, it could be outside and I could keep a fence there to keep him safe from wandering off or sometimes we see deer coming. And so just to keep animals from also getting in. So that's the main reason for the property. So this is kind of defeating everything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now if opposition would like to approach, you have ten minutes.
Hi, I'm Karen Dickey, the HOA president of Winthrop Manor. And this is Josh Crun, who borders this particular property.
Yes, so we were told that there would be a residential, or a buffer that would not be disturbed, that it would be larger than it was originally, but it was reduced and cut. And there is a monument that says, do not go, or do not disturb beyond this, this barrier or whatever. And everyone seems to be building their fence beyond that. So there is another issue today, I believe, on the same matter of people encroaching this buffer. And more houses are selling, and it probably will continue to happen. So we do not want them to keep extending the buffer. They'll probably cut down the trees within the, the fence with time. And the buffer was supposed to be there to, you know, protect the view from our neighborhood to over, over theirs, so.
We're just not really sure what to do because, you know, it's my understanding the law is just black and white. There's no gray area in the stipulations. We're putting in place that there is a buffer. And I'm so sorry that if the builder or whomever told this gentleman that it was okay to build that fence, that was okay, but it's not okay. And because they're going to continue building houses, and I, we fear they're going to continue to do so, to, to infringe on this buffer.
And we can see the fences from our neighborhood and, or the, the buffer. And it's up actually on a hill, and it used to be completely wooded, wooded. And now we can definitely see into people's backyards. And, you know, the, what barrier was planted, or what the arborist planted is still very small. And I fear that it will be cut down relatively soon and plant, people will plant other things there, but not things that will protect the view from our neighborhood. So I, I think it shouldn't be infringed upon. And, yeah, I guess, I, I do have photos too of, but the monument is very obvious that it's not their property that they built the fence on. And they willingly, you know, went beyond that and built the fence. So I guess that's it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And then CP, I have a picture that I'd like you to put up, and I'd like the applicant to come and approach. Sir, does this sign look familiar to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a sign in your backyard?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So I'm very familiar with this case.
The gentleman in opposition mentioned that he had photos. Is this the same photo that he had? I'm just curious, okay.
Yeah, these are photos that were submitted in opposition.
Okay, all right, thanks.
But I am very familiar with this case. The neighbors did work very long and hard with the original application on this rezoning. And protecting the natural buffer area was critical to the neighbors, and hence that is why we went and put these signs up. And you will have these signs in every single lot because, as we all know, when we do buffers, they're the first thing that tend to get disturbed and not followed. Therefore, I'd like to make my motion to deny OB thirty-four with the understanding that the applicant has to remove the fence by October sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. Now, for the applicant to clarify, you are allowed to put your fence in front of this marker. You cannot go behind this marker. And then also, I would like the applicant to work with the county arborist to replant any disturbed natural buffering or replant by November sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. I thought I saw on the paperwork that part of the fence is in the buffer, or is it the entire fence? Just part?
So it's, the, the fence is in the undisturbed buffer area. So I don't mind. The fences are in yellow because we have two applicants with, with the same situation. So essentially, looking at this picture, they could put the fence, not quite along the red line, but you can see where they had to grade.
Yeah.
And then they replanted to be in compliance with the zoning stipulations. So if the applicants would like to put the fence essentially in front of where that graded area ends, they could still totally enclose their fence, which would then allow for his son to enjoy the backyard.
Okay, I just needed a little clarity because on here I saw partial, partially, and then you said to remove the entire fence, so I just needed that clarification.
From the undisturbed buffer area. Is that, is that clear? Okay. Any other questions? Call the question. Motion passes three zero with Commissioner Burrell and Cupid absent.
Okay, next case is other business item number thirty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five, which is to consider amending the stipulations for Furniture Mattress Warehouse LP regarding rezoning application Z twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-one. The property is located on the south side of Piment Road and on the east side of Bellis Ferry Road in Land Lot six forty-two of the sixteenth district. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for other business item number thirty-seven, Furniture Mattress Warehouse? Is there anyone here opposed to this case? Madam Vice Chair and Board, it appears the applicant is not present. And, yeah, I'm not sure if we're going to have time to get them here before the hearing ends. I did talk to them last week, and I thought they were going to submit a letter to withdraw this, and they never, they never did.
Okay, Commissioner Allen?
I'd like to make a motion to continue until October twenty-first.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. Motion passes three zero with Commissioner Burrell and Cupid absent.
Okay, next case is other business item number thirty-nine of two thousand and twenty-five, which is to consider a reduction required lot size for horses for Matthew Brady Owen from two acres to point four five nine acres. The property is located on the south side of San Squaw, San Skolk, San Squaw Lane in Land Lot six ninety-seven of the nineteenth district. Is the applicant present? Applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number thirty-nine? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning, Jennifer Roseketha, on behalf of Matthew Brady Owen. My name is Jennifer Roseketha. I'm here today to respectfully request approval to house two therapeutic miniature horses, Luna and Ashley, on our private residential property as service animals in training. These animals are intended solely for the benefit of our immediate family, not for business, group home, or public program. We are a single household with three ADA-protected members, each with verified need for ongoing therapeutic and functional support. This request is not the result of a complaint, an enforcement action, or a dispute. I'm here proactively because I believe in following the appropriate process clearly, respectfully, and by the book. As a neurodivergent adult, structure and transparency are essential to how I engage with the world. And when I learned that we could possibly have opposition in the future, I decided to be proactive. We don't currently have any neighbors that are in opposition. We have no one that, our, our horses have not set foot in Cobb County. So again, this is a proactive measure. I do want to be clear about what we're not requesting. We're not asking to operate a commercial animal facility. We're not seeking to bring livestock into a suburban neighborhood. We're not asking for anything outside the scope of lawful, reasonable accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Act. We will use clicker training and positive reinforcement, desensitization to medical equipment and mobility aids, indoor hygiene protocols, including stall toileting and hoof boot use when indoors, and behavior shaping for emotional regulation and safety. Metza stands for Miniature Equine Therapy Standards Association. And by following Metza-aligned methods, we ensure that Luna and Ashley will be trained with professionalism, purpose, and respect for the role as federally protected therapeutic animals, not pets. Ashley has already been trained to eliminate bodily waste in a designated corner of her current stall, and she's teaching this process to her filly, Luna, who is at present almost a wingling. She, this training is designed to support future indoor access in a controlled hygienic way. When engaged in the therapeutic interaction within the home, both horses will wear soft boot-like hoof coverings to protect their footing on all types of flooring, surfaces, and support indoor safety. All planned training aligns with standards promoted by Metza for miniature equine assistance animals. Again, these will not be pets, they will be working therapeutic animals trained with professionalism and purpose. The request is both simple and deeply meaningful. It's to allow our therapeutic horses, Luna and Ashley, to join our home in order to serve the therapeutic needs of our disabled family members, while also providing a life-sustaining outlet for myself as their trainer and caregiver. We're not asking for special treatment, we're not asking for, we are asking simply for equal access to stability, support, and healing in the one place that should be the safest for us, which is our home. Both animals are being trained in accordance with Metza standard, as previously mentioned. We are going to, I'll give you just sort of a profile. Luna is a young duly-registered miniature horse. She's being trained from birth to certification as a service animal with a strong focus on emotional grounding, mobility support, and public access behavior. Her calm, curious nature and developmental imprinting make her an ideal candidate for advanced task training. Ashley, her mother, her dam, is a nineteen-year-old duly-registered miniature horse with a proven broodmare history. Several of her offspring are certified therapeutic animals. She is transitioning into a public access tasked-trained service role. Building on her nature, on her mature temperament and a long history of positive human interaction, her tasks include emotional regulation, retrieval, door assist, and mobility pacing for her disabled partner. The legal certification and framework. Both training programs follow ADA Title II and III guidelines, which recognize miniature horses as legitimate service animals. Certification will be pursued through Metza, which requires task proficiency, public access, access skills, and calm behavioral standards in public spaces. The task training summary. Both Luna and Ashley will be trained to realistically perform at least five disability-mitigating tasks for their designated disabled partner. Grounding during emotional dysregulation, so tactile pressure, nose touch. Item retrieval, medication pouch, or dropped objects. Door assist, push button, or tug rope. Mobility support, curb navigation, and pacing. Public space buffering, block command for crowd management. Their daily routine and support, support schedule will begin with turnout to pasture when the dew is lowest, before the heat rises. They require earlier access to grass for safe digestion, digestion, and also emotional regulation. The handler works from eight AM to four PM midday, so supervision will be, and care tasks will be led by my co-trainer, Hector Roseketha, who's also my husband and primary caregiver to our homeschooled disabled son and to my disabled veteran brother. Luna and Ashley are being trained to serve as ADA-compliant task-trained miniature service horses, supporting their disabled partners. We have a schedule laid out for them if you would like to have more information about that. We have an optimized training schedule and lifetime care model. As these animals live to be twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five years of age, we are creating for our family a continuity of care as my son grows and becomes more independent, but will remain to a certain degree dependent through, throughout his entire life. That continuity of care of having the same service animal that is trained specifically to him, and that they've had the early imprinting from the, the time of the colt's birth through her entire lifetime, is going to be an extremely vital thing for our household and for my peace of mind as a parent. We have the legal foundations, the Fair Housing Act and FHA and the ADA compliance. Under the Fair Housing Act, individuals with disabilities are entitled to reasonable accommodation, including the right to live with assistance animals such as service animals and service miniature horses. HUD guidelines guarantee that the assistance animals are not pets, and that breed, size, or specific restrictions do not apply. No special certifications or registration are required, and landlords may not impose additional fees, which is not applicable in our case as the property is owned. Owners are responsible for any damage caused by the animal, which is not going to be an issue. Similarly, the Americas with Disability, the Americans with Disabilities Act Title II and III explicitly include miniature horses as service animals if they are individually trained to perform tasks for a person with a disability. Public entities must make reasonable modifications to accommodate them, provide the animals, provided the animal is housebroken, under control, and does not compromise safety or operations. The sanitation and manure management plan covers both Luna, the four-month-old miniature filly, and her dam, Ashley, nineteen-years-old, both expected, both expected to reach not over thirty inches tall, as the dam is thirty inches at her shoulder, which is roughly the size of a female Great Dane. We have a schedule for manure task for, for management. We have compost schedules, trash schedules, dump schedules, all of the things. We have, I have pictures of visual evidence of the bonding, but, but since I think I'm running out of time, I do want to look at some of the legal precedents that we have. Besides mentioning the ADA and the FHA and the HUD guidance, there were, there was a key case, Anderson versus City of Blue Ash. And the facts of the case were that the family sought to keep a miniature horse, Ellie, as a therapeutic aid for their disabled daughter. The city enacted a residential ordinance banning horses and cited them for violations. This is not our case, we are trying to be proactive. Legal journey, the municipal court convicted the plaintiff. The district court dismissed the ADA FHAA claim citing preclusion from the criminal conviction. The Sixth Court of Appeals reversed, holding the criminal, criminal fact-finding cannot bar civil ADA FHAA claims. The case was remanded to determine whether or not reasonable accommodation was required under the law. The final legal outcome of this case was that the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled in favor of the family. It reversed the early dismissal.
Ma'am, your time has run.
Thank you.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you.
And we had no opposition. Correct? So I will go ahead and close the public hearing and turn this over to Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. Before you're seated, ma'am, I'd like you to come back up, please. I have a, some questions, a series of questions, in part because I'm a little unfamiliar with the miniature horses, et cetera, although I will share that I've done extensive research in preparation for, for this hearing, but I still have some questions I'd like for you to answer publicly for the record. The first question I'll start with is, do you have a copy of the letter of support from your neighbor as reflected in Exhibit C of the handout you passed out last month?
I apologize, I thought that it had been included, but I would be happy to provide that to the court. I don't have one with me, or not to the court, to the Board of Commissioners. I don't have one with me.
Okay, so you don't have that. And, and who is the neighbor? And where, where does the neighbor live in, in, in relation to your property?
They are one house adjoining. They are the Solomon family.
The Solomon family, okay. And that letter, I think that was the only document that was not submitted with, with the packet, okay.
My apologies.
Okay, all right. Also, as a point of clarification, the letter that was sent to the residents in Cobb County, the notification, indicate that Luna was born on June seventeenth? Is that, that's correct? But on your Exhibit A from the pediatrician, she indicates that Luna has been selectively bred for therapeutic traits and is dual-registered with AMHA and AMHR, but her letter is dated a day before Luna was born.
Okay, so I believe that I made the mistake. Luna was actually born in May, she was born May seventeenth, not June seventeenth. So that is a mistake on my part.
Okay. So within that one-month period, according to the doctor at Kaiser, within that one-month period, she became dual-registered?
No, she is eligible to be dual-registered. Her, her dam is duly-registered, and she is eligible to be duly-registered. I would have to check with the breeder if that has happened or not. I know the registration process has begun.
Right, and, and I recall you mentioning that last month, but in the letter from the doctor, she indicates that she is, at the time this letter was written, that she was dual-registered.
Okay.
So, because the doctor, the, the letter from the doctor indicates that she's ready to, you know, ready to begin training, ready to begin her therapy with, with the resident. So that, it's a little conflicting to me.
Gotcha.
So I just wanted some clarification on that.
Fun fact about autism and ADHD, there's time blindness, and so I'm not super great with dates. So that is most likely an error on my part that I just didn't, I didn't notice. Well, it, it's not that. It would have been information that I provided to the doctor regarding, and it shouldn't say that she is registered, but she is eligible for registration.
Okay, but the information in this letter is information that you communicated to the doctor.
Correct.
Because it's inconsistent with the information that you sent to the community. It's the only point that I'm, that I'm making.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so I have some questions, kind of broken down by category, just to kind of stay on point with everything. So for my commissioners, if you have any questions as I get through these categories, then please just jump in. The current housing arrangements, in your earlier testimony, you stated that you lived in the home since two thousand and nineteen, I believe?
That is correct.
Right, without horses. And for the record, just note that there aren't any horses currently at the property. So my question is, why are the horses needed now?
You know, if you've ever heard of step therapy, if you go to a doctor and you ask for a medication, they're going to step you with one thing, and then another, and then another, and then another. And we have done that with our family, as our family has developed, as our diagnoses have developed, and as our needs have developed. It's a natural evolution that you don't start with the big guns. You start small, and you work through, and you work through, and you work through. So this is, as a clinician, as a disabled person who spent a lifetime without accommodations, this is my effort to have gone through the steps first, to see with the least restrictive environment, what is the best service that we can put in place for our family. Our family dynamic has also changed. My brother has come to live with us. That is not something that was previously in existence. And so that dynamic and, and the nature of his disability has also escalated. And so that dynamic and, and the nature of his disability has also escalated some of the dynamics that we face in our household. And we are at a place that I would be remiss to say that it's not just as much for myself as it is for my family members. Because I work a, a job where I, I'm in heavy crisis all day. And then I come home and I need regulation because I am a disabled adult with accommodations in the workplace. And so this is as much for me, you know, as, as a trainer and a clinician as it is for my family. So the reason that they weren't there before is because it wasn't an option for us, but it had to become an option, given the need.
Okay, all right. Also, you sold your brother the house in November of 2024.
That's correct.
But also indicate that he's unable to live independently. So when the, excuse me, when the house in the farm in Fulton County is built, excuse me, I think it's December of next year?
Yes.
Is the timeline?
Yes, ma'am.
Will your brother move with you and the horses? Or will, will there be other caregiver arrangements for him? And if that is the case, does he plan to have horses there?
No, he will always live with us. So we acquired the eleven acres on which we're working to begin building so that we can have a space that accommodates the needs of our family, including therapeutic animals. Right now, the space that we have is adequate, it's not ideal by my standards, but it is adequate for the standards for keeping a therapeutic course. I would just like for them to have more space, and for us to have more space, and buffers and all of the things. So, yes, ma'am, once we make that transition, he will be coming with us and the animals will transfer as well. The animals will actually probably, yeah, will all transfer together.
Okay, okay. Horse training. You stated that the adult horse was used in a therapeutic setting and was trained, but is still with the breeder?
Yes, so I do need to make an amendment after clarifying with the, with the breeder. The, the, the dam has been used as a broodmare to produce because of her calm temperament, her curious nature, her just pliability with training. You know, she is broken to, to use a bathroom in, in one side of her stall, I mean, she's just, so she has been used as a, a horse who has produced multiple therapeutic horses that have gone into the, in therapeutic roles. So she has been essentially a broodmare, and so she would be transitioning her life from that service because she is nineteen. So she is not, for her health and safety, it's time for retirement regarding producing more foals. Luna will be her last foal, and keeping them together will help us provide a model for Luna. It will provide socialization for Luna with another equine as we're training and transitioning to our larger property.
Okay, so just a quick question regarding Ashley, you mentioned that she's nineteen and she's currently being trained. So I, I guess the assumption is that she did not serve as a therapeutic animal before now? Like, what was her life like from when she was born up till now?
Sure, she was selected to be a broodmare, to produce therapeutic offspring. So her life has been in the same family, with the same handler. You know, she, it's been sort of a, a life of luxuring babies.
Okay. And I believe you mentioned that you were also the trainer and the caregiver, and last month you testified that you were in the process of becoming certified. Can you share an update there?
So my, the certification that I'm doing, actually, when I looked at that, and that was an amendment that I wanted to make today, the certification that I am pursuing is actually for equine therapy, for riding and psychotherapy that has equine involvement. So it is actually not through Medsa, which is where I did a little bit of research and, and found Medsa. I also spoke with the breeder and we found a, one of, one of Luna's siblings is in a training facility in North Carolina, and they actually provide training for people who are going into therapeutic, who are training their animals for therapeutic. And again, the ADA provides for animals in training, that they do not have to walk through the door already trained.
Okay. Your earlier testimony, you communicated that you're, you're the trainer and the caregiver. Can you share with us the type of, I guess, responsibilities that would fall within your caregiving purview for the horses?
Sure, you have just the, the social connection, training the horses to behave a certain way in certain environments, get used to being desensitized, to being, to touch, to feel, to smell, to sound. We use clicker training to give immediate positive reinforcement, so let the animal know that immediately that the behavior that they're demonstrating is exactly what you're looking for. Lead rope, things like that, being used to wearing the, the hoof boots in, on indoors, teaching the animal that there's a difference between, just like any other service animal, when they're wearing their vest, they're in service mode, when they're not wearing their vest, they, they have free time. And so making that distinction also with the animal and just letting that become their norm.
Okay, and what about the caregiving responsibilities?
Caregiving responsibilities are well underhand. My husband, who is a stay-at-home primary caregiver for my brother and son, is oversees all of the caregiving stuff. So we will, as far as manure, we will do a morning and evening disposal of manure. These horses produce on a schedule, and they produce at the same rate as, like a Great Dane might, comparable. And so we will do morning and evening removal of that and make sure that there's clean shavings and minimize any sort of potential issue.
Okay.
Because we don't want to live with it either.
Right. So are there any other caregiving responsibilities? Because based on my research, for the, for the miniature horses, they also need to be stimulated?
Yes.
As well, and not just serve as a therapeutic animal? So I, I'm just trying to figure out, as it relates to the caregiver of the animals, not your brother or your son, but your caregiving to the animals, what type of stimulation do you plan to provide to the animals?
Gotcha, so there are engaging feeders. It's important to always have your horse feeding from the ground, that's the natural position, and it's the position that will most, is most preventative for something like colic. You can get, if you've ever seen the felt blankets that are tied at the ends, they have feeders like that too. So you're giving the horse a treat, but they're engaging with the, the sensations. You can put a mirror up in the stall, we have a jolly ball, we have a large soccer ball. And all of that engagement is part of the training. You want to have a, a healthy horse to have a healthy therapeutic service animal. So they have to be, and, and that also really, the initial consideration was only for Luna. Her mother became available, and it felt like for her health and training, just that ability to engage with another equine in her early development is going to be pretty crucial for her. So that is the opportunity that we looked at, it's like, you know, we, we have the need for two. We can do this, and it's going to be best-case scenario for everyone involved. So there are definitely engagements, there, there's just a plethora of engagement tools and things that you can do to keep horses engaged.
Okay, and will that type of training meet the specific needs of the disability?
It will, yes, ma'am, because a lot of that training is going to be target training. So while the horse thinks you're playing a game and they're getting rewards, they're actually learning to pick up something that fell down and bring it to you. They're learning to touch something, target touch, so you get a stick with a ball on the end of it. And you, you touch things, and when the horse extends up and touches where the ball has touched, that's an immediate click, that's a, a reinforcement of that behavior of like, that's where we wanted your nose to be, you did great. And so that kind of thing says, now it's on a push door, it's no longer on, you know, it's no longer on this post, it's on a, a sign that says push, to open doors and for pacing and things like that. So, yes, ma'am, every engagement with this, with the horse will be for their benefit, but also towards the training of, to the benefit of the recipients of their services.
Okay, and this is my last question regarding the training, and if my commissioners have, have any questions, they can jump in. But as it relates to Luna, she's only started imprinting based on the information that, that you submitted.
Well, she's old enough now that she started halter training and lead training, so.
I'm sorry, what type of training?
Halter training, so we work, we prefer to work with a, a rope halter. So we have a halter on her so that she can be led and that, that she walks alongside without resistance. So it's just a matter of, it's basically lead rope training, if that makes it.
And you mentioned there were two, two types of training that she's undergoing right now, what was the other?
Halter training and lead training, so wearing the halter and being used to having a, a foreign body on them, or a foreign apparatus, is, is the initial, the very, very early stages. You know, you, you put ropes around their, their behind and you get used to them, or you help them get used to being shifted from one side to another. So, for example, if I want her to be beside me, I'm going to raise my hand and teach her to come to me rather than me walk over to her, because it's her job to come to me. So those kind of, those kind of initiatives are being started.
Okay, so she's, she's not fully trained, which we know and we've already established. So my question is, when, when do you estimate her to be fully trained to meet the specific needs of the disabled occupants?
A little bit more every day. So the Medsa standard is within two years, and so the Medsa standard for us would be that she be certifiable within two years. But she is still, I mean, it's, it's kind of like training at Todd's, you know, she still has the young brain. And so there is some physical development that happens with her, but she's developing within the realm, like this is what she's going to know, this is, it's going to be joy for her to serve, just like any successful service animal. It is something that they find value in.
Okay, all right. I think that was all of the horse training questions that I had. Do you guys have any?
So on the jolly ball, you're talking the, the plastic one that you put the treats in, correct?
No, a jolly ball for horses is about this big, depending on the horse size. And it's a, it's a weighted ball, and it has a, a loop plastic part that they can bite. And like they can throw it up in the air and throw it to you, or just throw it on the ground. You can kick it to them, they can kick it back, and then there's a big inflated soccer ball, designed specifically, it's essentially a yoga ball, but with a protective covering.
Right, and, and I am very familiar with both of those, but the jolly balls, again, there are different types, and you just described the one that you're going to want, but they can be very noisy. And I, I just want the board to be aware of that, given that this is a residential area, that those can be very noisy and such when they're in use.
No more than any ball that I would throw for my dog, and these are not squeaky toys.
Okay. Thank you. You guys have any? Okay. Shelter, let's talk a little bit about shelter. Last month, you shared with the board that you have, I, I guess, a fence at your property?
Yes, ma'am.
And there is an aerial that's on the screen, Canelius, I'm not sure if you can show it for everyone to see. If you can, if you wouldn't mind just using the pointer to show us where you plan to have the horses when they're outdoors?
Sure, my vision.
Canelius, can you just give her, hold on, Canelius, can you just give her a pointer or? Okay, okay.
Okay, so the, the area that you're seeing is already recessed, it already has drainage. So for hosing, it's right next to the water access, and it has walls that are built up, and we will put additional fencing there and also a cover with a seven-foot opening. Because the way our property is built on a hill, we can put that, and, and this is recessed to the ground, we can put the, the shed roof at a seven-foot height, and it still would not exceed the height of our fence.
Okay, so you have the pad and you have the fence, and you're planning to put a covering on the fence to protect against inclement weather?
Yes, ma'am, so right now it's a concrete pad, so what we would do is we would put what you call stall mats to just give some comfort padding. And then I like to put about ten inches of thick bedding. It's a little excessive, but it makes the horses comfortable, it, it minimizes, well, it eliminates any odors or anything that could be there. And then you just, on a daily basis, you clean that area out. Also, both horses are now trained to use one area of, of their current stall. And so, and that's, it's just a goldmine, it's a horse that does that is worth their weight in gold. So they're just, they're intelligent enough to already understand, you know, safe elimination.
Okay, so on this pad, you mentioned that it, it has drainage. Will the horses relieve themselves on this pad? You mentioned that they're trained currently to relieve themselves on one side of the barn or a particular area of the barn, but is the plan to have them do that here? And, you know, with the drainage, I'm just trying to figure out how that's going to, how that's going to pan out.
Sure, the, me pointing out that there's a drain there just means that for, for regular maintenance, when we want to spray it down, just like when we want to power wash our driveway, the convenience of this spot is that there is a drain that's going straight down. So it's like not going into the street or not, you know, it's not being run off into any grass or anything. So yes, the horses will eliminate, again, you'll have the, the stall pads, and then you have thick bedding, just similar to a cat that uses a litter box or a dog that eliminates in grass.
Okay, all right. Also, you stated that the horses may need, they need hay and grass for food. Will, where will the hay be stored? And also, do you have sufficient grass in the backyard to allow for grazing?
We do have sufficient yard in the, in the back for grazing. We also have to limit their, their grazing time, they will have unlimited access to hay. We actually have a horse trailer where we can put our extra hay in store within the horse trailer, and we have extra, we have pre-existing sheds on the property as well that could serve for their tack. So there, the, there's no further inconvenience of having them there, just a little bit of reorganization.
So you plan to store the hay at your property?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
Just like we would a fifty-pound bag of dog food, just enough for the week. And then, next door to, well, I would say five houses down, there's a fifteen-acre property ranch, and they have, you know, all of these things. So, I mean, it's not, we live in a working-class neighborhood, a rural area. More of my neighbors have chickens than not. This is not, you know, it's a very supportive neighborhood. I don't anticipate any issues at all. Again, it's just how my autistic brain works, everybody keeps asking me why I'm doing this if there has not been a complaint. And it's just that I understand this to be protocol, so I am following protocol.
And, and speaking of complaints, you mentioned earlier that you're trying to get ahead of any future complaints. What, what would you, what would you guess those complaints to be, the opposition?
We have, we had a neighbor that was unwell. With his mental health and his physical health, he has since passed away, and may he rest in peace. I did anticipate potentially a conversation with this neighbor and, you know, due to circumstances, that's, he's no longer, I, I never had the opportunity to, to present him with this because he's no longer with us.
Okay, but what was his opposition?
I offered to cut his grass once, and he responded by calling, saying our grass was too tall. A, a, a very manicured, well-maintained lawn. So it, it just was, he had a pension for calling code enforcement. It was just, he, he had focus on neighbors on the other side of him, they moved, and so he turned his focus towards us.
Okay, so your thought is because he called about grass, he would then call about the animals?
Because he called about balloons floating in the air, he would call about animals.
So, all right, so what, what opposition or complaints do you anticipate? Because you mentioned earlier that you want to get in front of. Because you mentioned earlier that you want to get in front of it.
Yeah, I, okay.
So what, what do you anticipate your neighbors complaining about in the future?
I don't, I, I really do not. You know, my, my neighbors have chickens. Again, it's a working-class neighborhood. This is not a neighborhood where people are, are calling code enforcement on each other. I don't anticipate any issues and that's why we've made the decision to proceed now rather than once we have our land established and our home built.
Okay, because you mentioned at the top of your testimony that you were getting ahead of any future complaints. So I just wanted to.
I guess, again, thinking of the neighbor and some of the, some of the issues that we've had. And just again, my autistic brain says this is what you do before you.
Sure.
You make this kind of a decision. And so that is what I'm doing. I'm just coming to let you know that this is happening. And wanna get ahead of it and just make sure, get ahead of it, meaning if anyone were to ever see or say, then, then we will already have things in place.
The proper process, okay, I understand.
Because it's exhausting, the process is exhausting and I don't wanna have to do it on the backhand of things once my family has established a routine.
Sure, okay, thank you for that, I appreciate it. I just have two more questions.
Sure.
You indicated that you'll be using horses for community and school wellness programs, crisis de-escalation visits, sensory-friendly visits, I'm sorry, events. How will the animals be transported and is a separate vehicle required for that transportation?
I mean, I know an equine therapist that throws her mini-horse in the back of her Mustang. So we have a horse trailer. We do have appropriate ways to transport horses. When we gotta pick them up, we will use our horse trailer. We do have horses that are not housed on our property. We have horses that are, are, will be in transit, but they will go straight from where they are now, from their boarding facility, to our 11-acre property. So that is one thing. So it's, I mean, we're already actively in this process, but these are, they're not therapeutic. All horses for me are therapeutic, but these horses are being trained for a job. And so that is the big difference. So, but we do have the equipment and capacity to transport these horses in a safe way for them.
Right, and although they're, they're there for a particular job, your application does indicate that you plan to do these things. So I just wanted a little clarification there.
Sure, I, I am a licensed clinical social worker. I work with underserved populations that often do not have access to therapeutic interventions that many others might. I can't imagine a world where I have such a wonderful resource at my disposal that I wouldn't share if I found it to be appropriate and impactful for kids. So that is the long-term goal. But this is not opening the door for people to be coming into our home, to be engaging in services in our neighborhood.
Okay.
That is a very long-term goal towards the property that we purchase.
The 11 acres, okay.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you for that clarification. And just finally, my last question. Your letter to the neighbor, the notification letter?
Yes ma'am.
You state that the initial phase of this endeavor has already brought healing to your home. Please describe how the animals have brought healing if they're not currently at the home.
Sure, so we do visits with them. And I actually did prepare, I'm sorry, one moment.
Okay.
I did prepare video evidence of that. I have, I don't know if you would like to see.
At this point, we're just ask, asking and answering questions. Unfortunately, that should have been shared during your, your testimony at the top of the meeting.
Okay, my, my son is, I don't see the outward manifestation of joy on his face the way that I see it when he engages with these animals. So even though that right now they are an hour, hour and a half away in Delonaga, it is worth our time and effort to drive, to continue to engage with these animals so that he has the opportunity to experience something that he's very good at. He is an animal whisperer and it gives him confidence. And when you are raising a child that is made to feel that he's not adequate and is not qualified to be in a lot of spaces, when you find something that they excel at, you'll do anything that you can to make sure that they have the ability to engage in that.
Sure, okay, okay, thank you. That was, those are all of the questions that I have. I'll open it up to my colleagues if you guys have anything? No? Okay, alright, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Okay. Thank you for joining us today and for returning to share additional context. Last month, you, you, you guys were troopers, you stayed all the way to the end just to have the hearing continue to, to today. So I truly appreciate your efforts in meeting the needs or attempting to meet the needs of your family. This one is a very interesting one. And I certainly understand the need and the desire and the interest and, and the benefit in how it can bring needed therapy to the residents in the household. But with that said, I must also determine whether this request can be supported under our zoning code without conflicting with federal laws such as the Federal Housing Act and the American with Disabilities Act. And as a note, I'll share that these laws provide for an equal opportunity to housing and protects, protects against discrimination of the disabled. Both laws require reasonable accommodations, but only when the request does not fundamentally alter the program or policy, which is noted in, in the law. Currently, currently our code requires a minimum of two acres for this type of use and that's what's reflected on the application. But the subject parcel is just .459 acres. And that's approximately 77% smaller than what is required. But, okay. And, and that important factor, it just makes it a little difficult for me to, to, to support the application. My decision is not about questioning the therapeutic value of the animals, but also ensuring compliance with our code. By all accounts, it sounds like Luna is going to be a great addition to the family, but she's also at the very, very early stages of training herself. And I know that at some point she will be fully trained to meet the needs of the residents of the household. But by the testimony, she's, she's not quite at a point where she can provide the therapeutic services that are needed within the home. And I understand that during the training process for her, it also serves somewhat as therapy. But if she is in the home to provide therapeutic services, it doesn't seem that she's at that point just yet. But for those reasons, I, I do not believe that, and my reasons for determining whether or not, in determining whether or not it meets our code, I don't believe that a potential denial would violate the ADA or the FHA. Because again, those two laws speaks to accommodations. So an example for me would be if there was a request before us to add an ADA ramp, for example, that would be a consideration for an accommodation, not to discriminate against ADA. But with this case, it's not that it violates ADA or FHA. Instead, or rather, it reflects our responsibility to apply zoning standards consistently while being mindful of the broader community. I'm glad to learn that you have a property that you're currently pursuing. I think that in, to your testimony earlier, it would be more space for the horses to move around and it may better accommodate your family. But with that, I make a motion, Madam Vice Chair, to deny OB 39, 2025.
Second, any discussion?
None for me.
Call the question. Motion passes 3-0 with Commissioner Burrell and Cupid absent.
Okay, last case on the agenda is Other Business Item Number 43 of 2025, which is to consider amending the stipulations for Adrian and Toadj Millar, uh, Allmiller regarding Resilient Application Z47 of 2016. The property is located on the east side of Ellis Mountain Drive, north of Sage Lake Bend, and then on 45 of the 19th District. Is the applicant present? The director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 43? Okay, one, one opposed? Okay, I'll let the director show there's one person opposed. All those who wish to address the board either for or against, please come forward and be sworn in.
Hi, I'm Adrian, this is my husband Taj, and I know that you've just heard a case similar to this, but I hope you'll look at this with fresh eyes because I think we have a slightly different perspective here. So to give you some background, we moved here in February from Alpharetta. My husband works for Home Depot's headquarters, so we needed to be closer to the office. So before we moved, we spoke to our builder about putting in a fence. And our builder did give us that approval, but not without speaking with someone from the county first, which was Mark Anthony, or Matt Anthony, who is currently site plan review arborist. But I think in the past, he's also worked with the construction teams. So we put this fence in shortly after we moved and then fast forward to May. Days after I gave birth, we had zoning enforcement show up at our house saying that our fence was out of code. So that's when we started, you know, of course, doing some digging, we were very confused by this. And because our fence actually falls within the disturbed buffer, not the natural undisturbed buffer. The placard, as you all saw in the previous case, it says undisturbed or natural undisturbed buffer, but it's in the wrong location. So our property was required to have two buffers. So instead of just a natural undisturbed buffer, there is also for some reason an, a disturbed buffer, and our fence is in the disturbed buffer. We own the property in the disturbed buffer. We do not own the undisturbed buffer and our fence is not in the undisturbed buffer. So anyway, so we've gone kind of back and forth on this a bit. And, you know, we would like permission for our fence to be in the property that we own, in the disturbed buffer. As you can see, if we would move our fence forward outside of the disturbed buffer, it would essentially cut the space of our owned property, you know, more than in half. The, we had not disturbed any of the trees, any of the plantings, we don't intend to do that. It's simply just putting a fence there. The reason for this also is precedence. The, the communities on Winthrop, to my knowledge, there's not the stipulation for any type of buffer. The power lines have been clear, or the, where the power lines are, which separates our property from their property, that was cleared by, I believe, Cobb EMC. Power lines live there. And we've seen on the other side that there actually is a fence. There's prob, they have, you know, structure that's basically in what our natural undisturbed buffer would be and that's not where our fence is at all. So that's one of the reasons. The other reason is privacy. If we would move our fence forward, it would expose our bedroom window to the woods. And I, you know, having a young child, for me myself, I don't want that, that view to our woods, for someone to be able to be in the woods and, you know, look into our window. And yeah, that's, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. You can have a seat. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition?
Sorry, I, I just.
Please state your name.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Please state your name.
Karen Dickie, president of the Homeowners Association for Winthrop Manor. My property does not back up to these buffers. But several people could not attend today. And they asked me at the last minute to come and represent them because they had to go out of town or they're in court. And it does break my heart to hear these, the gentleman before and this couple, it really does. I hate that they're in that position. I've seen the, the photos and I feel like talking to the residents of Winthrop Manor, they're afraid that if they let this go, it will set a precedence for everybody else. And we don't know how to stop it. It should never have gotten this far to begin with, if you know what I mean. I mean, there were precautions and stipulations and I don't know what happened, I really don't. I don't know how it fell through. But they are adamant about staying within the buffer zone and the stipulations and preventing it from happening again. So that's my rebuttal. And I, like I said, I've got a big heart, so they should not have asked me to represent them because I, I, I have feelings for everybody, for every party involved. But like I said before, I mean, it, it was written and I, I don't really know what happened, where it fell through the cracks.
Great.
And I, this might not be the time to mention this, but what could we do to prevent this? Because, you know, I look at the builders and I look at the HOA over there at Ellis Farms. I'm not sure, you know, is there anything that as county commissioners, you could help us with? So this doesn't, we don't have to come here again and no one builds a fence and has to move it. Is there anything we can do?
So do you have any other questions? I'll, I will answer your question, but during the public hearing part. Okay, so if you're done, I will go ahead and ask you to sit down and close the public hearing. This is within my district. Yes, there are things in place for the developers to clearly understand where they can disturb, where they cannot. It is also clearly marked on each plat of where a homeowner can put things and cannot. And that again is why the placards were installed as an extra precautionary to, in case someone didn't go back to their plat, didn't go back to the site plan, would know you're not supposed to disturb past this point. That was the whole reason for those placards to be in place. I think that was one of the first cases we ever did that in the county because so many people were violating the buffer restrictions that are on there. So yes, there are things in place to help prevent homeowners from getting into this place and position. As far as why the developer and then why the HOA said they could do it, I cannot answer that. That is a conversation they will need to have with their homeowners group. John, do we have? Okay. The whole board members?
I think we should.
Okay, if you could please approach.
You can see here how he distinguishes between the two different buffers since our land has an extra buffer.
So if we're looking at that aerial, this is supposed to be undisturbed. Okay. For the record, Matt Anthony said, "This wouldn't be a problem to install the fence in the 30-foot permanent buffer area and along the backside. The 30-foot natural maintained buffer has to be maintained, so no fence can be installed in this area." And so their other business item is asking for the fence to be installed in the natural maintained buffer area.
That's not what we said. He said the disturbed buffer. As far as the disturbed, it's, you're not in the disturbed buffer. That might have to...
Okay, John. So in reading this, that staff allowed the grading to happen in the natural maintained landscape buffer area?
And that was permitted per the zoning conditions.
Was permitted through the zoning conditions. But that natural maintained landscape buffer was never meant to be installed in a fence, correct?
That's right. It's just plantings.
Just plantings.
It's shown on the GIS photo that's on the screen right now.
Okay. And John, for the record, can you show us where the 30-foot permanent buffer is on the site, or do you know approximately where it would be?
Hey, CP, if you go to GIS map, okay, do you see where it says the words OB 43 R20, September 2025? Those three rows of plantings is the buffer we're talking about, the 30-foot landscape maintained natural buffer. The 30-foot undisturbed buffer is to the right of that going towards the power lines. So that area, right there, is the 30-foot area.
So the fence, I'm guessing, is then, has been installed behind these three rows of trees?
Correct.
Okay. Which, again, per the marker that has been placed, actually, you can kind of see it, if I'm correct, it's right under the P? That essentially says that it should not be disturbed beyond this point, correct?
Yeah, well, it just designates the area behind it as a 30-foot maintained natural landscape buffer.
Right. Commissioner Sheffield?
No, I didn't.
Okay, okay, okay. Does anybody have any, any board members have any questions? So John, with the original stipulations that were done, essentially, this, either the 30-foot undisturbed or the 30-foot natural, they pretty much weren't intended to become personal use by the homeowners.
Correct. And you know, this subdivision's got two 30-foot buffers. One's a permanent buffer next to the power lines, and then when they came back in for other business to amend the plan, the board put an additional 30-foot landscape natural maintained buffer going towards these properties to protect the neighbors in Winthrop Manor.
Okay. And I'd also like it to be noted that staff had recommended the homeowners to reach out to Winthrop Manor and have discussions, and none of those discussions were had. For the record, I will also be submitting to the clerk letters in opposition to this other business item. With that, I am prepared to make a motion to deny OB 43 with the understanding that the fence needs to be removed from the buffer area and placed within the fence line marker that denotes the area that it can be placed. And then also, if any, that needs to be done by October 16th of 2025. And if any landscaping or natural buffer area needs to be replanted, needs to be done so by November 16th of 2025.
Second.
Any questions? Call the question. Motion passes 3-0 with Commissioner Burl and Cupid absent. And thank you to my fellow board members. That adjourns our meeting.
Great job, temporary vice chair.